Welcome people, I'll call order the meeting of Lakeland Shores City Council at six thirty on April third, two thousand twenty-five. Kim, would you take roll call please?
Councilmember Schroeder?
Here.
Councilmember Stan Miller?
Here.
Councilmember Hatton?
Here.
Councilmember Erickson?
Here.
Mayor Bishop?
Here. Would you all join me in the pledge of allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And, under one, the final thing is, is the adopt the agenda. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda, adopt the agenda.
I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Under two, we have the consent agenda. We have to approve the monthly claims, as well as be the January second, two thousand twenty-five city council meeting minutes. Is there any discussion concerning this at all? Any sharp eyes pick out any problems with the meeting minutes? With that, I would move that we approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda in a minute from January.
I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Under, well, we might set our record tonight. Under three, unfinished and new business. Three A is crack and seal coat bids.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I do apologize, the, for some reason on the last agenda, which they use these forms over and over, public comment was not on there. So, public comment comes out next.
Okay. Is there anybody here that would like to speak publicly concerning anything that's on the agenda?
Anything that's not on the agenda.
Oh, yeah, okay. Why don't you step up there, just sign in and say your name and address and...
Just one address.
One address. We'll go with the address we're talking about. My name is Janelle Hastings, and the address we are talking about is one fifteen Lakeland Shores Road. And... So, we are in the process, we being my family, of moving from one nine five Quinlan to one fifteen Lakeland Shores Road. We lost my dad a year ago. That's the house they built together when I was in high school. It's the, it's our family's house. It's too much house for her. We also learned as my dad was going through cancer and hospice, it's a very unfriendly house to age in or have mobility problems in. So, with us moving in, we want to put on an addition and expand the living area to include an area that has a single floor space, that has bathroom facilities, bedroom, a living room, an office, kitchen, things that she would like to do with her family, grandkids and whatnot, but we can't do on the main floor of our house because there's no restroom. So, we've been going back and forth with Kim. Kim, we set up, she helped us set up a planning meeting with Jennifer, and she came back saying that we couldn't do our plan because it was meeting the definition of its own dwelling unit. And so, I guess we want some clarification onto specifically how that meets the definition of a dwelling unit within the ordinance, and then what we need to do to proceed. And this is kind of going back, we had that meeting with Jennifer on February twentieth. She responded back to us with her email March eleventh. She's never responded again to any of our questions for clarification. Kim's kind of trying to be the middle person. I don't know who's really making the decision, and we're just having trouble moving forward with our plans. So, we're looking for some clarification and guidance on next steps. And I understand it might not be here, we just figured it was easier to get in front of a roomful of people.
Well, I mean, the good thing is, is that you're approaching this the way we would like most people to approach it, especially those of us that live on the river, as to, you know, getting some information upfront, you know, before you go to all the trouble of whatever it is that you may have to do in order to have architectural plans and finished plans and whatever else, and know some of the problems that exist. I personally am not familiar with what you're talking about, okay? I mean, I understand what, I think, what you want to do, okay?
Yep.
But are you expanding the footprint at all?
Yes.
You are. And in which direction are you going?
Towards the street. So...
So, you're going west?
West.
Okay, so you're not going towards the water?
Mm-mm.
And...
And I do have, if this helps, to look at, I have it.
I guess I'm, I guess I'm looking for you for answers. I guess we really can't decide on that.
No, may I, councilmember, it's not your job to review plans?
Yeah, we don't have anything to review.
Okay.
I mean, I'm sorry.
Which is fine.
Right. We don't, you know, like John said, we don't know anything about the situation.
Yeah, and I'm not, we're not expecting that you review anything right now. We're just trying to look for guidance on how we, I don't know if it's really, if, are you the zoning administrator?
Yes.
Okay.
And I, I'm just gonna say, and then I'm gonna stop. You were given guidance, so...
The, the last email, I mean, I have it in here. I'm not an ordinance expert, but maybe this.
That's why we met with the planning consultant. She is the, that's why we had a pre-op meeting. And you were told how to revise the plans, and that's how you would get a building permit.
So, based on what she came back with, it feels like we satisfy that. So, how do we, so at that point, are we at a point of an appeal? In which case, does that go to you? Because...
There is no appeal.
There is no appeal. It'd be like a variance.
Yeah, he had to ask for a variance.
This doesn't qualify for variance.
No.
So, yeah, I mean, it seems to me that you're, you either need to be talking with the person Jennifer, okay, or...
Which would be great. She's not responding.
On it quickly enough for you, okay?
At all.
No, she's been responding to me.
Okay.
And a pre-op meeting is a one-time meeting.
Right.
It's not council back and forth reviewing plans.
Right. So, I realize that you don't want to stick your foot any further into this than you may have already done so, but is it your... I mean, so she just doesn't walk away from here totally frustrated, not knowing anything, okay? Is it...
So, can we schedule a meeting with you?
Kim, you feel that she's got the information from the person that we hire, okay? And so, that she can proceed, not with the building permit, but with changing her plans in order to...
She already has that.
So, they, what you proposed doesn't meet the criteria. So, you have to come up with some revisions?
Based on the definition, it seems like it does meet the criteria, and that's why we're confused.
And according to the planner, it's not.
And that's what we have a planner for.
And has the planner given you a reason as to why, when you, I don't know whether you can contact her or not?
So, she, she came back. "Based on the submitted plans, the attached ADU addition includes a complete kitchen and bathroom. Therefore, meets the definition of a dwelling unit, which results in two dwelling units on the parcel." And the code doesn't allow for that. So, a complete kitchen and a complete bathroom would mean both of those. We have a three-quarter bathroom, which is not a complete bathroom. So, that alone, I would think satisfies the ordinance. It's not a complete bathroom.
Yeah, but I mean, we're talking about two things here. You're talking about a kitchen as well as a bathroom.
The last email I sent, and also sent it to Isaac, is, in your plans, remove the full, the kitchen, remove the full bath, you are allowed a half bath or a three-quarter bath.
So, then we, so we did remove the full kitchen. We're not clear why the half bath has anything to do with it. And Jennifer said nothing about, how does a half bath make someplace a complete dwelling unit?
I'm, I'm not gonna argue about this.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know. Have you, have you, put it this way, have you gone back to her with the, with the kitchen removed?
We've gone back to Kim.
Yeah, and it's about the review plans.
Yeah.
The kitchen needs to be removed, and the full bath, and then the one half to three-quarter bath, and we made.
We, we never had a full bath. There was never a full bath in a plan. It's never been there. So, we had a, we have a three quarter, the way we have it drawn now is there's not a full kitchen, there's a three-quarter bath, and a half bath. Why does the half, where is the definition of that?
And, and for the planner, that's where it is. She is the ordinance expert. I am not, and I'm not going to.
That's not what she said when she came back, though. She, she said it can't have a complete kitchen and a complete bathroom. We don't have a complete kitchen. That alone satisfies the ordinance. There's no complete kitchen. So, how does the half bath have anything to do with it? And we can't, we don't know how to proceed when we can't get an answer to that question.
Honestly, I, you know, I feel foolish that I don't have the answer for you, okay? But, but, you know, we generally rely on experts. It's what we're paying them for, or you're paying them for, whichever it is, and, you know...
And she did follow up, I mean, the last thing in her email was, "Please let me know if you have any questions." We've proposed that question, and she's never responded back. So, with the person we've hired, I mean, it took from February twenty-first to March eleventh to get an answer. We immediately had a question. We have never heard back.
She has responded through me, and this is why it's a pre-op. This is why you don't have people on staff. It's a consulting city planner. They have other communities they're working with. And it was a one-time thing, a pre-op meeting.
So, have you specifically asked her about the half bath? What is it? How does the half bath?
I specifically asked her when she got back to me about your revised plans with no kitchen. She said there's two bathrooms in there. That is not allowed. A half or three-quarter bath would be fine.
One or the other.
Which is nowhere in the ordinance.
That's not what the...
That's not what the ordinance says.
I'm, I'm not in work, I told you.
Yeah, we're not here to interpret it. I mean, that's what we hired.
I mean, it's clear, the ADUs, guesthouses, mother-in-law apartments, second dwellings are not allowed.
Which it shares utilities, it shares a front door, it shares everything.
Anyway.
I don't, so...
Well, I understand your frustration. I, I'm sure you're still frustrated. See what kind of response you get, you know, if you, if you contact her, okay?
I would advise you to send me an email with specific questions.
Okay.
And I will send it to her, but the, the planner is not going to dig into ordinances, give you ordinance numbers. She's already looked at this, and she's given you her analysis.
Okay. So, in our city documents, on, what's it called? Our City of Lakeland Shores Comprehensive Plan talks about communication amongst all of us. It specifically talks about lifecycle housing opportunities. We are...
Yeah, I mean, we understand what you're trying to do, okay?
Yeah, I just, we built that house.
Right, I understand.
I'd like to stay there.
And let me just ask you this one other question. Has she pointed you to any ordinances at all that, that would necessarily restrict you from...
I have three.
What?
She's pointed me to three.
Yep, what are they?
A dwelling unit is defined as...
No, just what's, what's the number, what's the number?
It's one five one dot zero zero four.
Yep.
Dwelling unit definition, and then one five one dot zero zero seven D.
Did you say B?
Uh, D as in dog.
And one five one dot zero zero eight B.
That was a D as well?
Uh, that was a B as in boy. I'm sorry. And so, those, the first one defines a dwelling unit. And then the second two say that we can't have more than one dwelling unit
Right.
on our properties, which I understand that part.
Okay, right.
What we're struggling with is the definition of a dwelling unit that's
Okay.
in the ordinances.
Well, see if you can get, do what Kim suggested here, and I just, for my own information, since I'm totally blind at this point as far as what these ordinances actually say, I'll, I'll take a look at them, but I'm not suggesting I'm gonna get back to you because that's not my position, but I am interested in what it is that you're attempting to do, which I think I have a general idea.
Yep.
And, you know...
And I, I do believe that I have her email in here somewhere. It seems...
I, I can follow this up and talk with you, and we don't have to take any more time over here. And, and you should email me, and then I will pass it on.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
The multi-generational housing, that is becoming more and more popular. It's much more environmentally friendly, and it keeps down like...
Right. There's a lot of good reasons to do it, but, you know, right at the moment, that's not what the ordinance allows. Okay, moving on. I assume that there's nobody else that wishes to speak at a public meeting. We'll go to three, unfinished and new business. A is crack and seal coat bids. I have not gotten together with John Perotti yet. I was gonna call him. Sometime in the first part of May. I'll call him in April, but won't be able to get together until the first week in May, if he has time then, in which we would probably look at the roads, make a decision as to whether there's anything that needs to be done to the roads, and... But I did not get together with him last fall because I, because basically it has only been about a year since we had that half of our roads for, at least, you know, milled and coated, so... And I am aware of the fact that there's some concern about the cracks where we joined the county road, so I will dwell on that as well. And see what he has to say. Are there any other questions about the roads?
Is that, are you gonna take a look at them at Second Street too, or, yeah, Third Street?
Yeah, I mean, where you pointed off.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I just, yeah, just curious.
Yeah, I'm not just gonna look at the new roads.
Yeah.
And three B is twenty twenty-three fire department dedicated dollars. Tim, this is yours.
Yeah, that was, so I was just double checking that. We saw out of the public safety money we got in twenty twenty-three, we gave five thousand dollars to the fire department that they received, and then I know the council had passed a thing to send money to the Fireman's Relief Association. And we did send that, is that correct? That was like four thousand, ten dollars for each person in town, four thousand three hundred and twenty dollars.
I don't remember that.
Yeah.
No?
Because I, Tom was here, and we made a motion to do that.
I'll have to look that up, but I, I remember the five thousand.
Yeah.
Remembered the relief.
Yeah, that was the other...
Okay, so I'll just follow up on that.
Okay.
Just as an aside, and Tim Hatton could speak to this as well, but I've been going the last two times to five city meetings that they have every other month, and there is a study being done, okay, before, I mean, I'm, if we, if we've already okayed the money, that's fine, okay?
Yeah.
But I just wanted you to be aware of the fact that I think dire news is coming on the fire department. You know, they're doing this study, and it's exhaustive. They're collecting all this detail, you know, about what they've been doing, you know, for years. This isn't the fire department doing it. This is a consulting firm they hired. And he spoke at the meeting two months ago, and they were just kind of getting going, and I kind of got the impression from at the last meeting, which was on March nineteenth, that conceivably, you know, although the fire department has promised in the past that they wouldn't have raised the rates more than five percent a year, that, you know, whatever the study said could conceivably mean that it might be more than that?
Yeah, it's not feasible.
What?
It's not feasible anymore to do it at five percent with all the...
So, I just wanted you to be aware of that before, I mean, if we've already approved the money, that's one thing.
Right.
But if we haven't, I think we ought to hold off until, you know, we find out what's really going on. And I don't know when the study's gonna be done, but I do know that I think with, I believe it's Stanley that's retiring.
Yeah, Jim Stanley.
You know, and them having to hire a new chief, et cetera, et cetera, that their costs, and the lack, the lack of volunteer help, or the adequacy of it to cover everything, may mean some significant changes to just our budget in the future. So, I just throw that out there as... Tim, is that how you kind of remember it?
Oh, yeah, definitely. I was gonna touch on that later.
Okay. And then consideration of additional dedicated dollars, fire department is that beyond the five thousand and the four thousand that you said?
Yeah, so basically, the, the fourteen thousand some odd dollars we got in twenty twenty-three, we got from the state for, to help out the public safety money, and the only thing we have is deputy sheriffs or the fire department, and this fire department is at where they need it. We gave five thousand, but the, the fire relief is separate than the fire department. That's for the members for when they retire.
Okay.
So, and I don't know if you guys remember in the past talking about, so if a member is in good standing, they have so many years, and they retired, they're, I think it might be five thousand a year they get for every year they've been.
Yeah, I think if it was a twenty-year person, it was a hundred thousand dollars, yeah.
And some of the other surrounding silly cities are up, you know, eight, nine, ten thousand. And so, one of my things is we need to start putting money in this to make it enticing, to keep people and get people involved. Otherwise, we're gonna be, you know, have no, nobody that's gonna respond. So, that's separate from that, and I think maybe Tim added that, the additional, or that line C.
Yeah, I was wondering, we had the money from safety.
Because we still have like nine thousand left, and we have to use it by a certain time.
I don't think, well, there is a, can you, there is a deadline or not? I wasn't sure if there's a deadline on that.
Yeah.
We gave, we, because we just, we have it, we knew the fire department needed the money. We, last year, at the beginning of the year, we, we gave five thousand since we didn't have to spend it. I was gonna make up suggesting that we give more money to the fire department out of the nine thousand plus what's left. Because, well, I don't know, what else can we spend it on? I suppose we can give it to the sheriff's office, but then that doesn't come back to the community.
No, they, they, they were gonna, they wanted more money for a deputy down in Denmark Township, and we don't need to put a, provide a deputy down in Denmark Township.
Yeah, so that, my, I was gonna suggest if we, out of the remaining money, give money to the fire department. No.
I guess it's my feeling, I guess I've already expressed it, that until we figure out what's going on with the fire department, we should know, or we can find out when this report may be coming through, that we kind of hold back on giving any additional money unless there is a time deadline on it. Just to see what's going on.
To make it, the money isn't, there's certain parameters we can use with that money on the public safety money. There's certain things we can buy, and, like, you know, sad to say that we have to provide flat jackets for all our guys and, and stuff, and certain coded radios that nobody can get on the frequency that cost eight grand or nine grand.
Yeah, the, the new radios that we have to buy are nine grand, and have to do that to comply with the county, so...
But we can talk that, about that after the next couple of months.
Okay, anything else? C three. Okay, we're at four, which is staff updates. Kim?
I have nothing.
Going to the mayor and the council reports. Tim Schroeder?
I guess I have nothing because we covered well weird.
Tim Hatton?
So, I do have a couple of things that I normally don't, so the fire department, we, they passed on permitting processing things that we want to get all the five cities on. We're in the process of figuring out who's gonna do the billing and stuff like that, so some of that will be coming around here soon. One of the things that, and John went to the five city meetings, they talk about the people's well waters and the contamination. So, it's a pretty good idea if you do have well water to get it tested, because it does take about a year to get it back from the, is it the county that does it? Tim?
Yeah.
Yeah.
County.
Or if it's a state. But there is money available for remediation if you do have a issue.
I think we probably have three or four homes that haven't hooked up to city water yet.
Yeah, and like my neighbor had a well, and when he put in the city hookup, got rid of the well, it was paid for a hundred percent by the county, probably through the three-year fund. Coming up here, we have the pancake breakfast for the fire department. That's on May fourth from eight to noon. If you don't know, like, any of the firemen, and I never did until I joined the ward, when you call for help and they show up, and you, you know, they're strangers, if you don't know anybody. When we called the fire department for my mom and, and like six or seven people pulled up, and I knew all of them, and here you have seven people in your home helping a loved one, and you know each one of them by first name, is, but I definitely would suggest going. It's a free, you can do a donate food, or there is a free will donation that goes to the relief association. Plus, you can come down and see the department and, you know, the fancy trucks and whatnot.
Did you say that's tomorrow?
Nope, May fourth. It might be Star Wars theme. So, like, like, the mayor said, the chief is retiring, so we're in the process of hiring a new chief. The, it's kind of delayed because we were getting the study done. The study got pushed off a little bit. It was expensive, and we're going through that now, and, you know, hopefully have it back in like a few months. In the meantime, we have two deputy chiefs that will, this is a short story. We have two deputy chiefs that are gonna be the interim co-chiefs together, so we're still covered. So, you know, nothing to really worry about. And then, I was gonna say about the long-term study. There is, what, they, part of the process with the Fitch for the long-term studies, they want to talk to, quote, stakeholders from the city. So, if, if any of you want to, like I mentioned before, we're in the process of setting up a meeting. They think Fitch will come down for the two days and talk to everybody they need to, which includes fire members or fire department members and everybody else. But like and John touched on it too, that we're we're low on members, cause nobody really wants to be a fireman anymore. Um the average age of the fire member or members down at the department, is it fifty or a little over fifty?
Yeah.
Yeah, and we have a few a few guys who are getting ready to retire who've been doing this for thirty, forty years.
And we're probably gonna lose four or five in the next three months.
Hopefully we don't. And they're you know, they're not just people or numbers. They get either they bring experience and knowledge
Yeah.
which help the newer members, but that's one of the reasons we're having the study done. And part of the thing is the pay is not compared to other departments in the area. And especially the relief association, like some of them relief associations like Bayport is nearly twice of what we have, so staying here for half the year relief association money versus going up the road to be a fireman, it's it's hard to keep members, so. Yeah, that was about it, but there will be changes coming then after the study and I assume that the cost of the fire service is gonna go up. We also need to tack on, we haven't really ever since we built the building and we had the um what do you call that? We were paying for it? That service?
Yeah, for the building.
Yes, so now the building's paid for, but there's no money for maintenance or repairs, so we're gonna have to also add that on. So there that'll be another additional.
Well, some things I'm working on is on the pole that powers the building. A road we got up and chewed, we have three phase, so a squirrel or something chewed the one phase, so we're running on two phase. So the one company came out and said you need to pull new wire. It's gonna cost twenty or thirty thousand from the pole to the building. But that's, we don't have budget for that. And then also we need a new backup generator and that's twenty five to thirty grand.
Thirty five, forty, yeah.
And if you don't understand, we have a six hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget. And we have roughly sixty five hundred people in this area, so we're people are getting fire protection for a hundred bucks per person, per resident roughly. And that, you know, and we only can do five percent. We do five percent of six hundred and fifty thousand with cost of everything, with electric, gas, everything, insurance, inflation, everything, we can't keep up. And so the biggest thing and we can we can do improvements, get equipment, but if we don't have firemen, we're not gonna have a fire department. And you know, long term planning, the study, they might say, well, we need X amount of guys at a hundred thousand apiece. Well, we you know, that'd just blow everything out of the water. So we're trying to keep by paying more putting more money in the relief association, letting people know that they're valued down here, cause when people pick up the phone and dial nine one one, they think somebody's gonna come and help them. And these guys jump out of bed in the middle of the night to come to your house and they've been to our house three times in the last twenty five years, so.
Oh, and part of the thing too, we're losing the chief, but the chief also does a lot of maintenance.
Yeah.
And like does way beyond what he's, you know, asked to do. So we're also in the process of figuring out all the extra stuff Jim does. And I know Tim's part of that process too of finding an electrician, finding a heat and AC guy.
Yeah.
So there will be changes and again, it's it's gonna be the study that comes out. And the changes, you know, obviously we're not can't make them right away because
No.
we've already budgeted for twenty twenty five.
We're working on the next year's.
Yeah, so we're starting to run the twenty twenty six budget, but obviously it's not gonna something change this immediately. So I think that's it. That's the most I've ever said before.
Sorry about adding on.
No, thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Um we had our um JBB recycling meeting last week. Our annual one time a year meeting. And I have nothing, same report from that.
Roger.
Okay, I guess I could say one more thing. Uh we we also had the um cable commission meeting, the once a year, sometimes twice a year meeting. And it's the basically the numbers are about the same. I think they'd say shrunk just a little bit from what we'll get received in the past. Which I don't know how much it was exactly.
I haven't gotten any complaints on the roads recently, uh and I do know that there are some places that need to be patched and depending on the numbers to whether or not we actually you know, hire somebody to do it or whether I get out there with a bag of asphalt from Menards, but um so once I've gone over the and I'll try to see Perotti before I go out of town, but uh I'm going to so that if we do need to do something, we can have it ready for the meeting next time we meet. I have gone around and cut some of the brush on uh on Lakeland Shore's road that encroaches on the on the pavement as well as uh the road that goes from Quinlan over to uh Coyote. There's a couple of other places that I have to hit yet. It's easier to do it when there aren't any leaves on the trees and um on the brush, I should say. And I know in the past, you know, we've asked the homeowner to do it, but there's so little to be done uh for the most part, except for maybe over there next to you or Tim, um that uh it's nothing I can't do in the in my retirement, put it that way. I did cut the rest of the uh uh flowers uh over what was left of last year's flowers on the median sometime last week. I'm not quite sure why they stopped, because they had done such a great job of, they being Lakeland, had done such a great job of uh taking all the uh flowers down. Um but either way, I normally think of us as being responsible for three out of nine of the of the mediums and and I didn't do more than one and a half uh was all that was left. And one other thing that came out of the joint five city meeting the other day was the brush location that they wanna put in the southern part of the county as compared to us all driving up to Ugo and um they've come they've actually purchased the property. It's where the driver's school is uh on the frontage road that's kind of by the uh up there by the uh well, it's right across from the church.
That old truck driving school.
Yep.
Okay.
And they're going to use the building, I think, for the sheriff's department is gonna use it some way. And the um the brush will be there uh somewhere on the, there's a fair number of acres there.
Yeah, was it like forty five acres there?
Yeah, you know, it seemed it seemed it seemed an awful lot considering it's just uh between there and the freeway. But anyway, um I know they paid significant money for the place, even though it'd been for sale forever. But they did indicate that the early estate for opening would be uh uh probably early summer of two thousand twenty six. So we're talking about, you know, fifteen months from now. And other than that, um I don't think there's uh anything to be added to it. It's about it's it's all I've got. Thank you. Would someone uh like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye. Yeah, my son and I were looking at.